All right, we want to get our work session tonight started. We appreciate those that are here, which are all the important people. We want to just make you aware, if you're watching online, that Councilmember Troxel texted. She'll be about 15 minutes late, but she will be here. And tonight, we're talking about potential property tax increase, for the purpose of capturing the increased costs of city fleet assets due to inflation, and the discussion of potential funding options and the ramifications. And the mayor's budget has been turned over to City Council, and so I'll turn the time over for the rest of the meeting to Mayor Protem Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and the same thing, we appreciate everybody that's here, and hopefully there's some folks out there watching tonight as well, kind of go over some of this stuff. We appreciate the work that Mr. Carter has put in to this, to help explain this to us, and get us, so we're all kind of on the same page. So, turn the time over to you, Tom.
Awesome, thanks. Thanks. So yeah, so again, just have some things to go over with the council tonight. The first part is kind of just a summary of where we ended, I believe, the last work session, talking about the potential for a new building inspector. So, as it goes in here, Brigham City and Perry City staffs have just had preliminary discussions regarding a relationship, a contract regarding Brigham City providing these services to Perry.
Just, since this is a public meet, can I just, maybe it's not a correction, but maybe correct, we're doing a new building inspector anyways, because we need it in Brigham City, but the potential here is for a partnership with Perry to then bear half or 60%
Yeah.
of the cost of that. So I just wanted to make sure that the city wasn't thinking, hey, we have enough, but now we want to do more, just because Perry wants to partner.
Yeah. Valid, valid point there. As we talked about in previous meetings, our current building inspector has now kind of raised the flag to city administration, saying he would like more help, needs more help. So what Perry has offered, they have offered 45% of the building inspector's fully burdened wage of $135,000, so that translates to $60,000 and change. Round up, make it $61,000. The previous contractor that Perry City was using estimated that they were spending approximately 500 hours per year out there. So really, follow that through, if you figure full-time employees, about 2,000 hours were about 24, 25% of the total employees' time being spent in Perry, whereas they are offering to fund 45% of their fully burdened salary. You know, so why would Brigham do this? Why would we be interested in doing this? It increases revenue from Perry to offset that cost, because the building inspector is being asked for, the additional building inspector is being asked for by staff. So Perry helps offset the cost. Obviously, that's going to enhance our service levels for the city, and it does help Perry. One of the cool parts about this is staff had seen that there was going to be a need for an additional building inspector in the future, they identified employee, and had begun working with him to receive the necessary qualifications, certificates, so that he could become a building inspector. So this would obviously allow us to promote internally for this employee to come do full-time building inspector. Right now, he's the Public Works Inspector down in the Public Works Department. And as you all are very aware, we do have existing contracts with Perry for fire EMS services, the Fire Marshal, so it just strengthens, it's not inflation this week, it's going to be strengthened, strengthens that collaboration that we do have with Perry City. So, the breakdown is, okay, what's the impact in the budget if this were to happen as proposed? It's $135,000. Perry City will contribute that $60,750, meaning that Brigham City would need to come up with We are proposing that we increase the building permit revenue inside the budget to offset that expense. You can see on the chart where building permit revenue has been going historically. This year, we're anticipating it to hit just right around that $500,000 number. There had already been an increase inside the mayor's budget, we're just going to increase it more to cover that $74,250. The nice thing about the building permit revenue is, that is allowed, so as wages go up and the expenses of doing a building inspection increase, we're allowed to go and recoup those costs through the building permit fee. So if we're finding, hey, we're not covering our true costs here, we can propose a building permit fee increase to council to cover that cost, so there would not be an impact on the general fund. It's one of these things that we can actually cover through the fee of the people utilizing the service. That is the proposal to the council on that. Is there any questions, clarifications you would like about the building inspector, and why we are proposing it with the Perry revenue stream as the mayor?
How much is the increase on the building permit over last year?
The building permit increase over last year, it's going to be pretty close to that $75,000 number, $90,000, if I remember right.
Are you talking about in aggregate or each individual?
Yeah, what's your average increase? If you're going to tack it on to the building inspection permit?
We want to go and identify what the true costs are, but we're, we fully anticipate, because of what's happening with the growth and everything?
Just the quantity itself?
Just the quantity itself is going to make up for that building permit.
So you're not, so we're not raising?
We're not proposing an increase right now, no.
Got it, okay.
I'm just saying, if for whatever reason an increase was needed, we could do that and tie it to the actual cost, but right now, we don't see that.
Sure, but your forecasting is revenue's going to, based on projections of growth?
Yep.
That's a great in for question, though, Councilmember Jeffrey, and that leads to that if there does need to be an increase in that fee to hit this, that we can come back with a budget amendment?
Later.
Later in the year.
And that's one of the things I just wanted to point out really quick, I didn't mean to step in, so our city administrator, Derek Whaler, has been very conscious of what's going on with growth and what's taking place here in Brigham City. And two years ago, he approached Tracy Halliday, our chief building official for the city, and said, you need to give, or three years ago, maybe it was, he says, you need to give me two years' notice when we need another building inspector. Two years ago, Tracy provided that notice, so some of the good ideas that staff had is, like Tom mentioned, with our Public Works Building Inspector, we, over the last two years, he's obtained every certification except for the plan review. So, we have set ourselves up, it's very difficult to find these type of employees, and we're cross-training another individual right now, we went through an interview process for another building inspector at some point, this cross-training. So we, I feel like because of the mayor and Derek's vision on what was happening, that we've been able to get ahead of this, so we're setting ourselves, we have set ourselves up in a very good situation for this to happen if the council chooses to do so.
Yeah, if it, so if, from that, if you get anything, it's if somebody, if a young high school kid says, what should I do for a living, tell them to go become a building inspector, because it's an in-demand job and it doesn't require a four-year degree.
And currently, our inspector is working, he's, we haven't budgeted for overtime, right? Because he essentially is working overtime all, every, all the time.
Yeah.
So this is switch overtime hours to regular time hours for the new employee?
Ideally.
It'd be a?
Ideally, there'll still be overtime.
Yeah. Is there a backlog going on? I mean, that two, they're not going to run out of work having two guys instead of one now, right?
No, we don't anticipate that at all. With what's coming down the pipe, what we forecast to be happening, so.
Very good question, though. Brings a good point, because if you've, if this is managed appropriately, you should save the hours of overtime and just go straight into salary, and then it's a wash, if it's managed correctly, if that's what I understand.
Yeah.
So if you think of it that way, it's kind of a no-brainer.
A lot of time, too, is just the?
But if you're, if he's still gaining all that overtime hours for the year, then I think we're doing something wrong.
Well, and right now, what we're doing is actually, we are using our Public Works Inspector to try to keep the overtime down as much, so even though we don't have two building inspectors, the city's staff recognizes we want to keep, keep costs down on what we're paying individuals, and it makes sense for us just to take the person that already has our certifications when Tracy's off, and put them over there to keep the hours down, even though he does work overtime. It's way less than what it would be if we weren't in this situation.
And I know it's preliminary, and we're just kind of like looking at some of that stuff, is that would it be, if we end up working more than 500 hours in Brigham City limits, or we just negotiate that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, really, that's the, yeah, yep.
I'd say that, to Councilmember Jeffrey's comments, that that workload management is based on the workload that we have right now.
Correct.
Bringing that second, if we have an explosion of growth, obviously, that's going to contribute to overtime, and then we'd have to look at, do we hire somebody else again, or do we?
Well, that day comes, yeah.
Yeah.
Any additional comments, questions about the building inspector? If not, we'll jump into the fun part, well, it's all fun. So as you will remember from last week's discussion, we talked about the fleet fund and the impact it has forecasted, planned to have on the general fund inside the mayor's budget. So, the number that we're going to talk a lot about tonight is $405,000. Because of, that's really the change between going from, we didn't have that 2% inflation adjustment in previous years to this year's budget, and how that is impacting inside the general fund. So, what I went and did is, I went and looked at some homes inside Brigham City, their historical values over the last couple of years, and then I said, all right, if 2026, because we don't have the finalized numbers yet from the county for property tax values and all that stuff yet, they look, they appear to be very close, but they're just not finalized yet. If I went and said, if you remember from Property Tax 101, Brigham City's entitled to the same amount of money it got last year from the same properties using their new values. So to make it simple, I just said, all right, 2026, we're going to, everyone's going to have the same values that they had in 2025. How much do I need to go get that money for the fleet fund, fleet lease vehicles inside the general fund? So if you look over on the side, it talks about property taxes. So that top number is the amount I'm allowed to go get, because that's the revenue we got last year. In this calculation, I said, all right, historically, what has our new growth number been? That's going to be an important part of this discussion, and it's going to be an important part that hopefully we get more clarification on from the county. Because that new growth money, it's, it will help immensely in this calculation. I just put in $75,000, it's kind of the average we have seen over the last couple of years. So that means, hey, I'm going to collect $3.3 million in property taxes. If you remember from the previous slide, I need $405,000 for the leases. So take 405 minus 75, that's where I get the 330 number from. So really, that's the number I need to collect in a property tax increase. So what that means, if I go and looked at all of the different values from last year, and what that would mean if I just did it across the board, it would be a 10.3% property tax increase. So I know in the mayor's budget, we'd put, in the mayor's budget, we'd put $450,000 as the property tax increase. And so when we had talked about things, that's where the 450 number came from. So really, now, we're just going to focus on the 405. So the 405 number, 75,000, I'm planning to get from new growth. I need an additional $330,000, that's a 10.3% property tax increase, and in this scenario, that gets applied across the board. That's not how property taxes work, but just to make this easy, and something we can wrap our hands or heads around, that's what I did. So you can see, for example, on there, Thor, Thor's home value is $405,000, this property tax increase would mean $39 to him for the year, so $3.27 per month. If all of that were to be said, if the council were to say, we want that $330,000 to come from property taxes, does that make sense? I got more scenarios to run it through, but, so then I went and looked at a different scenario. We heard the council talk about, hey, and I want to make this also, I guess abundantly clear on the record, too, Mayor Bott did not want a property tax increase. But as he talks about repetitively his experience at the fire station with the large tax increase that went through, he's very mindful of, if we don't do these things, we're just kicking the can down the road. And that's, staff has talked at length with him about these things. So, ideally, yeah, staff, the mayor, we'd all prefer to live in a world where property tax wasn't needed, an increase wasn't needed, but that's just not the reality of the situation. With that said, what we did next is I came in and looked at it and said, all right, what would happen if we just cut the property tax increase in half? Instead of the 10.3, it's now at 5.15. That gets me $165,000 in a property tax increase. I still need $330,000, where could I go get it? And so, it says sales tax increase, that doesn't mean that we're going to increase the rate for sales tax. What it means is, inside the mayor's budget, this year, we have budgeted $5.4 million in sales tax. I'm forecasting we're going to hit that thing right on the head, maybe just a little bit higher, but not as high as we have seen in previous years, where we had significant surplus in that. As we prepared the mayor's budget, and in talking with staff and the mayor, we wanted to be conservative with that. So in next year's budget, it has $5.4 million again. And a lot of that was just because of the uncertainty of the economy, where we were, and so really, the 3% increase here is, we just go raise that number to $5,565,000. Hopefully, we would get it, I just, we just don't know. So we left that number conservative because we felt comfortable with that. I would feel comfortable with this proposed increase as well. So if you were to do the tax increase in half, you can see the impact it now has on Thor, he's now down to $20 for the year, $1.63 a month. And the other thing we thought about is like, okay, hey, if, if we're not comfortable taking that whole $165,000 to sales tax, where's another area inside the general fund we could take it? That we were conservative in our revenue number. So inside the general fund, there's an ambulance revenue that we receive. There has been a change in how we are allowed to collect that money from our patients, and from those who utilize that service. It's a new bill that just went into effect the start of this month, actually, is when they made it impact. We don't fully know what that impact is going to be to ambulance revenue. We anticipate it to actually be a positive for the city, we're just not positive of how much, if that makes sense. So again, we were conservative in the number we put inside the mayor's budget. So if we wanted to put, if we wanted to split it out, say, hey, let's put half in sales tax, let's put half in the ambulance revenue, really, it's the same pair of pants, you just put it in different pockets, but if that's what we want to do, that's more than okay. The last scenario I had in through here is, as we've listened to the council talk during these, is, I've heard, maybe I made the mistake here, but talk of, hey, what would happen if we just increased the transfer from the utility fund from 12% to 12.5%? That would generate $158,000 more inside the general fund, meaning I got to go raise property taxes for $172,000, because I need that 330 again. So that's a 5.3% increase, and you can see, really, it doesn't change much versus the 5.15, they're pretty tight in there. So, those are kind of the scenarios I had worked through. If the council wants to look at different numbers, I do have a spreadsheet where we can go and plug in the five-point up there in the orange, you could go and see, if we did this, what would it look like, and how would that impact? But, but really, I think this kind of gives the council the flavor of the different options available to them. The one caveat with the utility transfer, because that is going to take money outside of the utility fund over to the general fund, we would then need to go identify capital project inside the utility fund to cut. And so that was the last slide I put in here, saying, okay, here's what we have coming from the utility fund, we need 158, $150,000, let's just make it easier, to cut. Which projects would the council say, we, tell me more about this, why should we do it, why should we not do it? Kind of along those lines. But really, that's what I had presented to you, just kind of to walk you through of what would it look like, and again, this is all very, best numbers available to us right now. And again, a lot can change with that new growth number. If that new growth number were to come in higher, that would obviously mean we could lower the property tax increase. The good news is, is we can put this in the tentative budget. I think Mayor Bott walked you guys through this scenario last time, too, is, we'll put a number inside the tentative budget for a property tax increase. We will notice the citizens of that property tax increase, we'll have a public hearing in August regarding the property tax increase. At that time, you could still lower the property tax increase, you just can't increase it. So if we were to do scenario two or three of the 5.15%, and if we got more numbers in, as we saw what was happening with property tax, and the new growth number became $150,000, we would then propose to council, if they wanted it, to then lower the proposed tax increase, because you wouldn't need the full 165. Does that make sense? So with that explanation and rambling, what could I confuse you more on, or try not to confuse you on help with?
We go to your slide with, let's see, we had property tax, sales tax?
So there's sales tax, ambulance, utility transfer.
Utility transfer.
Sorry, I have my Zoom thing right in the middle of my screen, so I'm trying to make...
I think that's correct. Just foot in your spreadsheet, the number there was, you have 405 in there, and the fleet increased to general fund instead of the 330, so I was just like...
Oh, I got, yeah.
Okay, I just double-checked. Okay. So then, go, if we go to a, I don't know, my thought process, so go to your very first one, the 10-point? Just the three?
Yeah. And again, I put up there on the screen, too, I think it's important, I think one of our citizens made the point about, hey, we need to be aware, and I know the council is, is, there may be, and I don't know yet, I haven't heard of other entities that are going to be raising their property taxes. So I put the Brigham City tax up there, and then the entire tax of that home. So, like Hulk, he pays a total of $1,928 under this scenario. Of that 1,928, 377 is coming to Brigham City. You don't need to sum them together, the 377's included in the total tax number, but, so in this scenario, Hulk would have a $35 annual property tax increase for Brigham City, and that equates to roughly three bucks a month. So my recommendation to council would be, okay, what do we feel comfortable with as far as a property tax increase? Like if, I mean, I heard Councilmember Smith talk about last time, and you probably all said it, but he was the one that I remember specifically saying, he was more comfortable, maybe that wasn't the word he used, but, with a 5% to 6% increase. And so really, that was, after I ran through the math of, okay, we need $405,000 for fleet, that's 10.3, if I just divide that in half, it gets me in that range that Councilmember Smith had talked about. So that's where I ended at. So my proposal, or council, I guess, to the council would be, really, tell me what number you're thinking about for a property tax increase, and on the other side of it, if you're interested in a utility transfer, that makes things a little bit easier, well, not easier, but, I guess the first question is, are you interested in increasing the utility transfer? If that's a no, then how much is the property tax increase?
Well, you went from 12.3 to 12.5 on the utility transfer, and is that...
12, 12 to 12.5.
12 to 12.5.
Yeah, so it's a half percent. And if you're not interested in doing that, then let's just talk about, okay, what rate are you interested in? If you're interested in the 5.15%, the other $165,000 that we need to go find inside the general fund, I'm confident with what I've explained, with ambulance revenue and sales tax, those numbers were very conservative in the mayor's budget. I don't have any heartburn, any losing sleep at night, if we were to just go bump up those revenue numbers to go get the 165. I would have a little more heartburn if it was all going to those numbers instead of property tax, because I think it speaks to the mayor's experience and the council members' experience also, is, in truth and taxation, there's no inflation adjustment, there's no, nothing to capture any of that. And so this allows the city to go and get 5%, capture that, not lose ground on inflation as much, and it really helps avoiding what Mayor Bott, were you the only one that lived through that? Councilmember Troxel, were you on the?
Well, we did as citizens.
I mean, we did as citizens, like I believe the initial proposal was doubled, like it was 100% increase, because it had just been kicked down the road so much. And in my experience as the county auditor, I watched municipalities do that over and over and over. And I get why, like, it's not a fun thing to go through a tax increase, but you're just, my observation was, is people just kick that can down the road until you have to do the 100% increase, and that's just not good for anyone.
Well, I think that, to be honest with you, Tom, I think it's, it's not really about kicking the can down the road. The fact of the matter is, is what are we going to talk about next year? So, you increased property taxes because this year, we're talking about fleet fund adjustments, got it. Next year, what do we come back to and talk about? Rec department, or police station, or another firehouse, we've got to raise property taxes for that? So it's not about kicking the can down the road, it's about, sometimes you've got to take a stance and say, hold on a minute, slow down, because you've got to look at next year and the year after. I'm not a fan of raising property taxes every year. I know, we talked about that last, last week. It's tough, so I'm more worried about, okay, I get, I totally understand the fleet adjustment. I think everybody here on this council probably understands the mathematics and the rationale behind that, but taking an increase of, say, 10% now, or 5.15, whatever decide, what's next year going to look like, or the year after? I know, we don't want to talk about that, but that's what...
So that's one of the key components of, hopefully, as the city grows and... So that's one of the key components of, hopefully, as the city grows and community and economic development take place, as we bring in large industry, the example being Niagara.
Right.
Niagara came in, their utility transfer, if you think about it, their transfer coming off their utilities is what funds our fire department, our police station because of that. The issue, and I get, no one's a fan of tax increases, it's just, but if we, if we don't do it, you're asking the city to do the same work they did this year with the same dollar, but at inflated prices. Which, I mean, the city does remarkable work, staff, they go do amazing things with what we ask them to do, and they will do it. That's, that's the awesome part about the staff the city has. Is, you give them the parameters, they'll get it done. It's just becoming harder and harder when that parameter box gets smaller and smaller. But, yeah, your point's well received.
Tom, does this graph we're looking at right here, the twenty two to twenty three jump, we can see the property tax increase right there, the property values went up, or was that, that's not the year we had the tax increase you were talking about?
It was going back a couple more years. Bigger one is that one, but in the last, the only year the city did not do a property tax increase was last year.
That's mostly just the values of the houses changing there, more than the property tax increase.
Correct.
My thoughts are, I don't, I don't like the idea of increasing the utility transfer because I think that's just moving money from one pocket to the other. I don't think that brings in any different revenue or anything, I mean, that doesn't, to me, that's not an option because it doesn't help us, it doesn't do anything, really. Just saying, I'm going to take it from this puck, bucket instead of that bucket, and it's, it's kind of sixes.
Yeah, but what it does do, according to what Tom just said, it does make you reevaluate your capital projects, what you're going to spend money on, so you might have to reevaluate that.
Well, sure, we're going to have to do that, no matter what we do with the money.
I do have a question, this sheet here, on this page, is this everything that you guys, the city's planned on purchasing, and everything that's on this to replace everything? And back out, to replace everything on this list, is that?
So that list is the list that was proposed by the different departments, so everything above the green line is what will be purchased.
Two green lines, right?
Yeah, there's two green lines. So you're talking about priorities one all the way to eleven?
Yeah, so anything above two point three million-ish.
And there's like four number ones.
By replacement vehicles, we're looking at a truck, am I reading this correctly? A new truck, a new plow truck, and salter truck, right? A new ambulance, well, that's the one we've already got going, right?
Yeah, so the big green line of number twelve is the cutoff. So everything above that parks, the dump truck, plow, salter, that has been put into the mayor's budget.
It'd be a thick book, but it'd be an interesting read to see how many of those have been on the list for how long. And they're finally moving to number one.
Tom, next, next question I have is on that sales tax. If we're, if we're saying we're going to get it from the sales tax and we don't hit that increase, are you thinking it's just going to come out of our fund balance, basically our checking account?
Yeah, if every other revenue were to hold the same, then yes.
And then currently, YTD, year-to-date, what are our sales, was our sales tax looking like? The same as last year? Are we? I don't know what my personal business one looks like, but
Well, Tom's looking that up, too, I want to go back to the fleet priority list, so that list could be four times as long as what it is. What we do is we, and Tom's already explained this at past meetings, we meet with every department of the city, one-on-one, and we go over maintenance history, we go over wear and tear on problems that we're having with the existing vehicles and equipment, downtime, what it means if that vehicle is down. And so we, we put everything that's realistic on that, we, that list could be three times that long, but we don't do that because we, after we meet with all the departments, we get together as a fleet committee, and then we have these conversations where we go over the hows and the whys and justifications.
So Councilmember Smith, to your question about sales tax, through March of last, I'm having this, on this year, we're at two million nine hundred and fifty eight thousand. Previous year, we were at, whoops, that's through April. Three million, just three million, I mean, yeah. So they're pretty, I mean, it's.
They're very, very close.
Very, very close. There's a little more, actually, never mind, I grabbed the wrong, three million eighty four thousand. That's why, in the budget, in the budget for this year, like I said, we had five point four million, based off of historical models and forecasting, we are forecasting to collect five million four hundred and three thousand and eight dollars. The eight dollars is important.
Yeah.
I do have one question, because this is what stuck out on this page, is, maybe Chief Reyes can help explain it. It says eight new F-150s. That seems like a lot of new vehicles in one year, so I'm just trying to understand why we need. How many vehicles does the police have, and are we swapping them all to eight new trucks?
We, we currently have a fleet of thirty two vehicles. And so the logic is our rotation is a fourth of the fleet, so every four years we'll recycle through. So one-fourth of the fleet is the eight vehicles which will cycle through, and then every year we would buy eight.
Every year you buy eight?
Yes.
And this is our third, is this our third year?
This will be our third year, correct, yeah. And we actually fell short the first couple of years, so that's why we're buying eight. Typically, we would buy, you know, seven, but because it's a number of thirty two, the years before, the first year we bought six, last year we bought seven, this year we'll buy eight. So there could be one or two off in either direction, but the goal is to rotate the fleet every four years, which is, which is a pretty conservative rotation as well, when you consider that our vehicles are, are running twelve hours a day, seven days awake typically. And if the mayor wants me to, I can kind of get into the, the theory behind the F-150, if you want me to get into that, so.
I got that.
Okay, you're fine.
Unless you want to, I, I understand the diff, I get it. Being a rural community, I could see that's more beneficial than a car.
That's not so much that, really.
Yeah, there's also the residual, so the resale value, and I know Tom talked about that in one of the previous budget meetings, but the concept, and it's been successful for other communities, is that if we buy, Crown Vic is what we used to have, you know, when I was a brand-new officer, and now it's a Ford Interceptor, which is basically a bare, a bare-bones Ford Explorer with some police upgrades. But we, we purchase a Ford Explorer, or a police interceptor, for forty thousand to forty-five thousand dollars. We run that vehicle for four to six years, put a hundred thousand miles on it, and it's completely bare-bones with vinyl floors, vinyl seats, you know, AM/FM radio with no Bluetooth and things like that. At the end of the year, we've, we've literally expended that vehicle's life. And so we sell it and we get a thousand to five thousand dollars for it. The theory behind the four-year rotation in the F-150 is we, we purchase vehicles on a state contract price, which is heavily discounted from, from a retail price. It's been getting less and less every year, in fact, Dodge just did away with their state contract pricing, but currently Ford and GM still offer state contract pricing. We purchase it for already discounted rate. We purchase a more desirable model, so a trim level, so instead of the XL with vinyl floors and whatnot, we get an XLT that has a little bit of an upgraded package that would, you know, be desirable for someone to purchase after we were done with it. We use that vehicle for four years, put approximately forty to sixty thousand miles on it, and we sell it with already the, the revenue of the state contract discount, and we sell it before its life is over, get that residual or, or the resale value, and then that revenue goes back into the fleet fund and helps offset the cost of the, the next year's vehicle, so.
And the value between what you described before is from one to five thousand dollars, the F-150 is closer to.
Right, so we, we purchase, we use all of, you know, forty thousand dollars is just the cost of the, of the Ford Interceptor. And then we put another, I think we're at around seventeen thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars in outfit, right, Tyler? So we put another, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars into outfit, and then we've got a sixty-five thousand dollar vehicle that's worth five thousand dollars at the end of four years. Versus, we purchase an F-150 for fifty-two thousand dollars, I think is what they're going for now. We put that same amount of outfit into it, we recycle that outfit, so we only have to do that once every third cycle. We sell the F-150, we, we paid, you know, fifty thousand dollars for it, we sell it for thirty thousand dollars. So it costs us twenty thousand dollars to run an F-150 versus sixty-five thousand to run a Ford Interceptor. Any other questions for me, council?
We're just in the initial purchasing phase, is why we're, I mean, that hasn't been going long enough.
Correct, we haven't realized any of the, the resale value of any of them, because we're only in our third year. So, well, just at the beginning of our third year, so we purchased two cycles, and we'll be purchasing our third if the council approves this, this budget in July.
And then next year, we'll be doing another four, another eight?
Another eight, possibly, possibly nine, or possibly seven, just kind of see where we're at with, with the vehicles that we need to rotate out. The other thing, so we have thirty two vehicles that are on the road, but we do need to maintain what's called a line unit or a backup vehicle in case we have one go down for repairs or we get in a crash, which happens quite often. So we maintain three line units, two of those line units are older marked vehicles, so you're, you know, with, with light bar and the police markings on the side. And then we maintain one unmarked line unit for our detectives and our administration to use in case one of their vehicles go down. So in reality, we have thirty five passenger vehicles in, in the police fleet.
Makes sense, thank you.
So if somebody proposed to just cut that down to four, we would have to extend the lease on what we already, the leases, and it wouldn't, the, the cost? Or how would the cost of keeping the leases on the ones that we currently have? Extending those?
We would extend out the, the life cycle of the vehicle. So we would just lower the lease, the annual lease, but it's going to be captured, the same amount's going to be captured over the life of the vehicle. So I'm still going to get eighty-eight thousand dollars, or eighty thousand dollars. It's just going to take me now eight years instead of five years.
And then we lose the revenue portion on that as well, so every year longer we keep that, we, reduces our revenue.
And since we haven't replaced the whole fleet, what would that do to the eight, the four that we would have to keep, the, the Tahos or whatever?
F-150s, so are you talking? Oh, the Durangos, that we're currently running.
Yeah.
So.
So we're going to replace eight of the Durangos?
Correct.
And the Durangos we're leasing?
Those have been purchased, they were purchased last year's budget, we, we initially were leasing them.
Okay. Do we purchase them?
This is where it gets a little, the Durangos had been leased to an external company.
Okay.
From futures, but we had made the final payment on them and we made the option to purchase them
Okay.
from the lease lessor. So we own the Durangos, they're ours completely, yeah.
And the, the initial line units that we'll be keeping will be the Durangos. I mean, obviously, you know, we're, we're going to take the best of the vehicles that we would normally surplus, and we'll keep those as line units because they're the most serviceable. And then when the next batch comes in, then we, it basically just moves down the line. And, and currently, the way that we review those vehicles that we purchase is, is kind of on a, on a point system, at least with the police department and fleet helps with this quite a bit. We look at age of the vehicle, the three metrics that we use are age of the vehicle, mileage of the vehicle, and then repair history. And so we, we try to cycle out our worst vehicles first, if that makes sense, and then, you know, the best of the eight that we have, that we would, we would resell, we'll keep three of those and, and keep those as line units, and then sell them the next year, and do the same thing with line units for, for next year. Any other questions for me? We're not asking for new police radios.
Well, you're asking for an upgrade to the radio, right? And the XLT from an AM/FM to maybe a CD player?
Right. Bluetooth now, yeah.
Eight-track. Eight-track.
But that's so, yeah, we talked about this the last work session as well, is, so the, the number that goes into this cutoff number is, so every department that has a vehicle, they have a lease payment back to the fleet fund. And whatever the total is for the entire city, that number gets used by the fleet committee to determine where does this cutoff go. So we're getting two point three million dollars this year through lease payments. So that is what the cutoff was for the fleet committee to go and say, all right, I have two point three million dollars to go buy new equipment for the fleet fund. And new equipment means replacing equipment. The list down here below is new equipment to the fleet fund. So in this world, how it works is, so the fire department, so the general fund, will send over, will transfer thirty thousand dollars to the fleet department so the fleet can make the purchase of the extraction equipment. And then next year, we then go and add thirty thousand dollars of extraction equipment to the lease program, and fire will start paying that back to the fleet fund, so when the extraction equipment is retired, now with the two percent kicker on there, we'll just say it's going to last ten years, there'll be a twenty percent increase, so there'll be that new revenue available to the fleet fund when that stuff is retired to go buy new extraction equipment. Because that was the, as, I think I talked about this last, the green line you see here, the dump truck, plow, salter line, when we first did it, the number was the cutoff would have been on the ambulance. Everything below number four would not have been able to be purchased this year. Because we were looking at one point seven was the cutoff. So you could reshuffle some of that stuff around, obviously, to get you more in there, but that's where we were landing, and that was the decision that was made to do the inflation increase. And then also, I think it's important for the council to understand, as far as property taxes go, what does that mean as far as the general fund? Inside the general fund, property taxes make up about twelve percent of our revenue stream for the general fund. So when we talk that three, three point, three seven, four million, three point four million, three point seven million, it is around that twelve percent number in the general fund.
So if you had, just thinking and looking at numbers, did you have that spreadsheet?
The, yeah, I do.
To change that five percent, like an eight percent or something?
The one I built will show you just kind of the impact it's going to have on.
On the marble characters?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Will it give us a total amount? It probably won't give us, never mind.
That would have been a better spreadsheet to build.
But that's okay. That's okay.
If you figure, let's see, let's do that really quick. Figure each percent gives you about thirty grand.
Each percent?
Yeah.
Okay. In the total?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you were just to do a one percent in property tax increase, it'd get you thirty grand.
Okay. So if we went from five to six percent, you'd be one-ninety-five instead of one-sixty.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. All right. And tell me if I'm looking at this wrong. It almost feels like we've gone from a proposed increase of fifteen to saying we're very, very comfortable at the ten already? Did I misread that whole thing?
No, that's correct.
Okay. And we really, it'd be very handy to have the numbers. We won't have those. So of the new growth numbers that come in.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, seventy-five thousand, is that a?
It's a historical average over the last couple of years.
Okay. All right.
It's a, and that's just a complete.
Okay. It's probably not, I mean, it's not going to be a hundred and fifty.
It's very estimated.
Yeah. And it probably is not going to be a hundred and fifty, it's probably not going to be fifty.
Yeah. It all depends. I mean, I didn't take into account last year's number. Last year's new growth number was like two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. And the reason it was so high is because of an RDA project area that ended. And so all of that rolled into as new growth. And I know, I know that's not happening, so I just went and looked at years of normal behavior, but.
When we look in, when we look at new growth, with the projects like the Brigham Lofts, the apartments down there, how does that, how do they figure that into a new growth? Do they figure that as what's completed?
Yeah. So it's, the assessor goes in and he is required to say as January first, what is the value of the property?
Okay.
And as far as what they actually go and, if it's a percentage of completion, that thing, I don't know all of the ins and outs of how that works. So, I mean, this is, this is the numbers that are right now on the state tax rate system. So it is showing a new growth number of three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars. And why that is so high is how the tax rate is calculated is they go and look at real property. Okay, so right now, these numbers aren't finalized either, I'm just, the council's aware. So there's one-point-nine billion dollars in real property value inside of Brigham City's tax area. Last year it was one-point-eight billion. And then the important number that's missing is that incremental value. That is stuff that's in RDA project areas. Brigham City does not receive property tax for those RDA areas. Well, we receive the property tax, but then we give it to the RDA to do what they do. So that number has not been subtracted out yet. So that's why it's showing such a huge new growth revenue is because how it's currently in there, it's showing all RDA projects are over, which is not true. Does that make sense? So you can come over and look at here. So this year right now, we have original, we have real property at the one-point-nine billion. Last year it was the one-point-seven billion, the number's coming from right here. So it's saying, hey, you have two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars in value change. When the assessor and the county auditor go and look at this, they have to tell the tax commission, okay, of that two-fifty-eight, how much is value change? How much is Thor's house now being valued higher? How much of it is Ant-Man's value and everyone's, all the commercial and industry? If it's an existing building and it's just a value change, that goes into the certified tax rate process. But then, if someone just builds a new building, if there's truly new growth, it wasn't there the year before, it's now online, that is what creates, for lack of a better term, one-year windfall. It's outside of the certified tax rate process, but once it's in there, so this year we get it, and then that establishes the new base number rolling forward. So, that was a very long explanation, but I wanted you to kind of see where the numbers are headed. But yeah, the three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, that is not a good number. Because there, right now, as it's shown in there, everything is done. So like if we go back to two thousand and twenty-three, since there wasn't a project area that ended that year, fifty-five thousand was the total new growth that Brigham City captured. So again, if, as the council gets ready to adopt a tentative budget next week, we will have more information available to really pin this down tighter. Just keep in mind, as if we go through that truth and taxation process, if that's what the council chooses to do, you can always reduce it, you just can't go above it. So if you were to come in and say, hey, well, I feel comfortable with a two percent, and that's what we went out and advertised to the public, had the public hearing about, and then during the public hearing process, you guys felt like you wanted to do five, we couldn't do it.
Couldn't do that.
But if flip it, if you advertise five and you wanted to do two, that's more than okay.
Okay.
We just can't go above what we had noticed the public. You are always more than welcome to go less.
So as we stare at this thing for next week, just so we are all on the, just so we all know, and if we look at that, I mean, clearly, the, like I said, the mayor's budget showed a fifteen percent. And to everyone is where that would be, we're clear with a ten percent. We feel like that's, that's good, I mean, as far as dropped it down already five percent. I guess what I'm, what I'm going, what I'm saying is, after next week, whatever we decide for a tentative budget, that is the number that will be announced, put out there, or noticed to everyone. So that's what will show up on their tax.
That's what will be in the newspaper, that's when they get their valuation notices in July from the county auditor that will be in there. It's parcel specific, so in there, as you remember, it will show, hey, this is what Brigham City's proposed tax increase means to me.
Well, if you don't propose one, then what happens?
If you don't propose one?
What happens?
Uh.
We have to figure out how to come up with three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in the general fund.
What's that?
We have to come up with three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in the general fund.
What kind of projects are that? Oh, you just canceled projects, I mean, then.
Three-hundred-and-thirty thousand in revenue or three-hundred-and-thirty in expense, yeah.
Yeah. Good.
So do you want us to be comfortable with at least the ten right now going into the tentative? I mean, is that what?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying if that's what we're going to do and that's what we end up saying next week, then that's what was going to be noticed to the public, whatever it is that we decided at that point. And then we can always, and again, so the, so as I'm thinking through this process, if we do that, we come to a truth and taxation. And by the time August comes and we hit a final budget in August after the truth and taxation meeting, we have a few more months of sales tax numbers, so we'll have a better, a clearer vision of that. And we'll have our new growth number from the county and, well, all of the numbers from the county as well. And at that point, we could say, oh, we don't need to. Or we can take it down to whatever, because it'll be this. So we'll have a clearer vision in August than we will on, than we will by next Thursday, in my opinion. I don't know that the county's necessarily going to have us all that by next Thursday, but.
Very good chance they will.
Okay.
But again, I don't know the full, where they are, but based on what they have inputted into the system, it appears they're pretty darn close to tying out, but again.
I'll be honest, you throw a number out there, we say ten percent, knowing that in August we can take it down? Well, you're going to take it down quite a bit. Because I just not comfortable with a ten percent property tax increase. So I look at it, if we're going to throw a number out here, let's be real.
Okay.
But if you want to sit here and say, yeah, let's do a ten, but August comes around, thus you can convince me otherwise, I just can't.
Swallow the ten?
Conscious, based on people I've talked to in this community, it's a hard one.
Okay. And, 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 I, I, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I know exactly what you mean.
I'm a better situation than you are.
Yeah. Yeah. But I'm, and I guess that's what I'm saying, is if you notice a ten and you plan, and you still are going, okay, with these clear numbers, I'm probably more, I'm probably more inclined to.
In my world that I live in.
A five or whatnot?
If I throw a number out, most times a none, by the end of the day, when it's all said and done, the dust settles, the number changes very small.
Okay.
Not drastic.
Okay.
So that's the world I live in. If I say, Tom, yeah, let's do, let's do four, then he'll probably come back next week and figure out how to make four work. If it was, okay, we'll set at nine, he'll probably come back with a number and say at nine. I'm not saying this hypothetically.
Yeah.
But I don't see numbers changing that dramatic, so, but if you're all comfortable with saying, have Tom work it at ten and know that in August we'll go down, then just know where I'm coming from.
I'm really comfortable with the five, with these changes.
I, I, okay, I really like the fact that Tom feels comfortable with the sales tax. I don't, I'm not a, I don't, I'm not as comfortable, but he has considerably more information than I do.
I need more information on the sales tax. That was, to me, that's a little scary for me.
Sales tax, but sales tax changes, like, you don't, you don't know what it is until it shows up.
Exactly. I don't know what, what it is.
And that's, that's the part that's scary for me.
Sales tax actually hits the lower-income people harder than it does others. So it's a tax that gets harder home for.
That's true, but we have no control.
But we don't know what that number is. But if you raise it, that's, it's an impact, so.
Yeah. So that's the part I want to be clear on, the sales tax increase, it is not a tax, like, we're not going to change the sales tax rate. I'm just going to go in and change my revenue forecast in the budget.
You're not going to raise sales tax, usually, okay.
No, I'm going to.
Expecting people to spend more.
I'm going to expect people to.
But you understand, if something like this gets in the paper, people see, says, sales tax, one-point-five percent increase. I look at it, I go, oh, my sales tax, that, next time I go to Smith's, is going to go up one and a half percent.
Yeah.
That's how I look, read that.
I don't even, I don't even know that we could, it would be a heck of a process for us to be able to do something like that.
Yeah.
We would not be able to do that in one of these meetings by just, here we go.
We may know that, but most people don't.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So that would, I mean, yeah, we would just have to clarify, the sales tax increase means that we would expect to get eighty-two thousand dollars more.
But in the truth and taxation, if we give you the five,
Yeah.
then that, that, this chart, I mean, then we'll only be speaking about the five.
Yep.
Or less.
We won't be talking, yeah.
Yeah, that, the other stuff on there just goes away. This is just.
That's just internal us knowing where that extra five percent is.
The other hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars would be a revenue forecasted increase to the sales tax. So it now would take the number to five million, four-hundred-eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Because right now, inside the mayor's budget, it's five-point, five-point-four million. And as I explained, that was just based off of, hey, we're going to hold it to where we are right now. Most municipalities that I have talked to, they are budgeting a small increase in sales tax, anywhere between two and five percent.
Okay.
We just held the number out of abundance of caution.
And if, and if we said a hundred, if we said, okay, we're planning a hundred-and-sixty-five, what percentage was, if you have it in that, in one of those numbers, eighty-two, two and three percent, right?
Yeah, that was.
Which fits right in the two, to five percent range, which other people are forecasting, okay.
Hey Ryan, I have people online saying you guys are kind of quiet. If we can talk closer to the mics. Thank you.
I, yeah.
And again, that's the, yeah, to make it a, the one number that is always pretty certain inside a budget is property tax. That's why, as an accountant, I like it. Because it's a known, like, that is the amount we are going to get, pretty darn close. I mean, there are some collection rates and board of equalization adjustments and things like that. But it's going to, it's going to happen. Some of it may take five years to collect, as people are delinquent and things like that, but we will get that number, pretty darn close to it. Sales tax, over the last few years, we have blown the doors off of sales tax. We have exceeded the forecast by hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that was what has funded our capital project fund. Because as the money, as that surplus grew, we move it from the general fund over to capital projects. And that's what has allowed us to go and buy like a fire truck that we just bought. That is where that money comes from, is those, and also in recent year, years, interest has just gone very positive for the city in the last couple of years. And that, double-sided, like, yeah, we get our interest, but that also means we pay it on the backside, so.
If, and if we go to five percent, I mean, that just means I, I know which one of those I am by looking at that. It's have to buy two less monsters.
Dear Spider-Man, is that you? Is that your house?
No.
Oh.
Yours not on there. So, okay, go ahead, Matt, sorry.
I was just thinking, if the sales tax number, I mean, if we're talking a hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's like two percent of the sales tax. I mean, it's a, if we're off, it's not going to be, you know what I mean? I don't know if we, we understand or have talked about how big a deal a hundred-and-fifty thousand is out of our sales tax revenue. It's, it's a small number, it's only two percent. So there's some wiggle room there, and I think you'd be definitely within it if we thought our sales tax is going to come in at two percent more than last year. That sounds like that's pretty easy to get, because last year it was five-point-four, this year you've got five-point-four million, right? So to come in at five-point-five-five, I don't think is a huge ask or a.
It's not crazy.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a crazy increase to expect two percent higher in sales tax. That's, that's not even the inflation rate.
Yeah. And that is a very good point that Councilmember Jensen makes. And it's important that, as we discuss this, the Councilmember Jeffrey's point is, it is not a, a sales tax increase in the percentage that people pay at the register. What we're talking about is what. What we're talking about is a, what increase in what we're collecting, in our forecast.
Well, to be clear, as this gets into the paper, I would change the wording on that, make it a sales tax revenue increase or something. Cause I think the average person in the community just thinks that the sales tax got increased. I mean, we all understand it here, but I don't think the average person would.
Yeah.
We used to expect people to spend more, or the costs to go up because of inflation, and we're not actually changing the sales tax rate at all.
Yeah.
And that's.
Well, Tom, I re, I really appreciate the work you've done into this, that speaks, makes ours, this side of the table a little easier to understand, so thank you.
You bet. And again, like, it's, it's one of those things, so I, if I were, my recommendation to council would be this model that you have before you, the one up on the screen right now, as we, we, I would be comfortable proposing a five point one five percent, and if you just wanna take it to five percent, I'm okay with that, too, like. And then splitting the difference between sales tax and ambulance revenue for those forecasted revenues. And I'm, again, not to beat the dead horse, but I'm gonna say it again, in the mayor's budget, those revenues had been held back conservatively. Sales tax is more of the economy and what we are experiencing with tariffs and inflation, and, I mean, things are still bouncing a little bit, as you're all very aware. So to Councilmember Jensen's point, that number's more than fine, it's justifiable, it's not, I don't think we're endangering, it's not irresponsible, it's fine. The ambulance revenue increase, that one is a change in state law. We haven't experienced exactly, exactly what that means, but we've, we anticipate it being a positive thing for the city.
And you, and again, that's something that you guys understand considerably more than we do, is, is I have zero idea how that ambulance works, the, the fees for that, so, I mean, that's where we lean on, on you guys as, as city staff to understand that, because, yeah, I don't, I don't.
It's, it's. This is the best, this is the best part about who we have on our team is, so Chief Thuisen and his team, they track that legislation, Nicole becomes involved, Derek becomes involved, DJ, the mayor becomes involved, and as we look at it, what it boils down to now is if you transport with parame, at a paramedic level of care, or an advanced EMT level of care, there are different rates that the state will allow you to charge. Chief Thuisen is on top of it, he's actually created, lack of a better term, policies and procedures about, hey, this is what, if we do this, we'll build this, and so, like, the Brigham City staff, so on top of it, like, especially those guys at the fire station, and the police, too, but now we're talking fire, but Chad's behind me and he has a gun, so.
So if we take the, just to simplify numbers, we are increasing the lease four percent, right?
Two.
Two percent?
Well, two percent per year of the life of the vehicle.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to, so that we have a number that we can give people that makes sense. So I'm trying to, like you said, take it down to five.
Yeah, so.
And so if we increase the sales tax to two.
It wouldn't even be that much.
Yeah, or the ambulance down to four, and the sales tax to two, anyways, I would, yeah, I'd like to go into the tentative budget with the, with the five percent proposal, increase, tax increase.
I'm kinda leaning the same way, and, and to me, my thinking is whether the offset side comes from sales tax or ambulance revenue, it's, again, it's one pocket or the other, they're all going into the same bucket in the general fund. So where, whether we get it from sales tax or ambulance, that's kind of our, the cushion side. The property tax, like Tom said, is a known that we're gonna put on the citizens. I'm not comfortable with the fifteen where we started, for sure, but also last year where we didn't have any increase. And I remember when the citizens did not like going years without, without increases, just to keep up the cost, and then get the huge, the huge one, like we've talked about, people did not like that, and so I'm fine with this five point one five increase on, on property taxes. And the, I, I, it, to me, it doesn't matter if we get it from the sales or the ambulance, or all sales, or.
I agree with Matt, a hundred percent, because at the end of the day, Tom, you guys know the inside of the budget and how to move money around to make it work, cause it does come, like Matt said, it just comes out of the same bucket, so how you move it to make the numbers work great, but I'm comfortable with the start at the five point one five as well. And then how you come in the middle with the other stuff, that's.
Okay, and yeah, that's the, now because of Councilmember Jeffrey's comments, which are very applicable, I just wanna make sure that people listening, that go and listen to this recording or watch this because they can't sleep at night, that when it up there where it says, I know they can't see me pointing at it, sales tax increase or ambulance revenue increase, those are forecasted in the budget increases, they are not, the council's not taking any action to actually increase any rate.
Increase, right.
A sales tax increase rate, or even an increase regarding ambulance transportation rates. That is not what is being proposed, it is just, I'm gonna go in and increase those revenue numbers inside the mayor's budget as a forecast.
Yeah, that's a projected forecast revenue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tom's clarifying that, Tom.
Just, just a, just a point, Mayor Portman, when, when would we have our truth in taxation scheduled for this, or Tom, I guess?
It is our first meeting in August.
So would it be, is it in lieu of the city council meeting, or is it in conjunction with the city council meeting?
It's just part of it.
Okay.
It's, they've changed the rules.
We don't have to have it passed before the June thirty.
No, we have to have a separate meeting where the only item that can be discussed is the budget, the proposed tax increase. But you then, but then you can do a different meeting, is my understanding, but we'll make sure that's all done correctly, Emma.
So we're looking at August seventh?
August seventh, I'm looking over at Christina, we've done this timeline a thousand different times, but yes, I believe it's August seventh.
Okay, good, cause that's the following week I'm out of town.
I know, I just, just going back on what you said earlier, if we put down that we want this five point one five, and that's the highest it can go, if that's what we advertise in the truth in taxation meeting. So given that it's two months away, do we say there's some wiggle room and say start at seven and a half percent? Just because we don't have all the information, or, cause otherwise we're locking in, we're, it's like we're voting for the five percent as the max right now, if that's what we say we want in the truth in taxation, right? Does, does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense. Yeah, and earlier today, I mean, that was my thinking, was come in at a truth in taxation that's a little bit higher than the five, just until we get all of the information and then be able to make that decision at that same meeting, when we, when we adopt the final budget in August.
That, that would be my thought, is, I mean, looking at the property tax increase there, it'd be like four dollars a house.
And we have a week to think, we don't decide that tonight, either.
Right.
We, I mean, we can come in next week and say, hey, let's, yeah, let's do it this way, so.
It would just be helpful to me.
Yeah, 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 well, it's, that, it would be helpful to me, too.
Well, as I prepare the documents.
Yeah, when you make those decisions and you're like, oh, I only have, I don't have all of the solid numbers yet.
Right, we'd have two months more.
Blah blah, and if I don't have them by next Thursday, then do I say the same thing without having all of, all of the numbers plugged in? That's just me thinking.
Yeah, you're good, like, the number is, we know we're gonna get three point three million in property tax.
We just don't know what the.
Without a tax increase.
Yes.
Like, that is the number, well, let me rephrase that, we know we're gonna get three million, two hundred forty-one, eight hundred twenty-seven. Like, this number is locked in. There will be a new growth component. I don't know what that number's going to be, but yeah. So up to the council completely, of whether you wanna put in a, a, a seven percent number and we go from there. I am comfortable with the five percent. If the council were to just say, hey, I'm.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good, and again, we don't have to decide, next week, we'll have to decide it next week, but.
I'd just like leaving some wiggle room until we have two more months of information.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with that either, so.
With more than likely not going to.
Right.
Seven percent, or eight, or whatever.
Do you guys wanna think about it for a while? I have some other questions. Do you have any other questions about this stuff?
We each have a different place we wanna start next week.
I'm sure we do, yeah, I'm sure we do, and we can, and.
Yeah, that's, I agree with Rob, and that's what I'm afraid of.
We can have some discussion next week and this, I mean, again, we have to dec, what we have to do is decide the tentative budget for next, next week.
Yeah, if you can, yeah, I need a number.
Yeah, so that people know what that is, so next Thursday we have to have, we don't have to have that tonight, we can have that next week. But with the realization that if we, if we go with the five point one five next week, and that's what we decide, we can go down, we cannot go up if numbers don't, if we don't have the new growth and that changes a little bit. I mean, it's not gonna change a ton, you're talking.
Right.
If we didn't get any new growth, it'd be two percent, so.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a big factor. I'm fine, I'm comfortable with the five point one five as well, the, the screen we've got right there, I think I'm, I, I'd be okay with.
Just food for thought for the next week.
All right, so I will, as I prepare the tentative budget, I will use the screen that's up here to.
Or, or the other one, whichever.
Okay. So was there any other items?
Is there anything else you?
With this, I have some, just things I need to clarify with the council, just as I prepare the budget to make sure I'm on the same page as you guys. So the first thing is, so the first work session we had, we talked about utility rates. The P-PAC is headed to zero. The agenda for next week, we're actually gonna move that up one month. We've, we've hit, now we're having about seven million dollars in the rate stabilization fund. Mayor Bot instructed me to get it onto the agenda for next week, to take the P-PAC to zero. So that will be happening for the month of June.
Effective for June.
Effective for June, yeah. The customer charge is going to ten dollars for, we're talking residential. We're just gonna follow the Dave Berg rate schedule, unless there was, the council had other thoughts, ideas, concerns. Blue can going to nine fifty for recycling, and then I looked in the contract, so the one-year requirement is in our contract with Econo Waste. So I don't believe it's something that we could actually modify as a council, but that would be a question I could talk with legal about.
For the blue can, meaning if you have a blue can, you have to have it for at least a year before you can get rid of it.
So that would mean that people that came in today, into my office and got a blue can, they are right now paying seven dollars and seventy-five cents, or whatever it is. And a month from now, now goes to nine fifty, they're locked in for one year, there's no.
Can we keep them, can we keep the people that are within the year at the seven fifty?
It'd be a bit of a headache, it would, we'd have to create a whole different rate schedule, it wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it.
There's rules on that, there's actually tax, there's actually law on that.
We would have to come up with the differences.
Everyone has to pay the same fee.
Yeah.
You can't grandfather people in, so.
Then the other things I'm building in, so we're gonna keep the fleet, as proposed, build in the building inspector.
Yes, I was, I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
So the personnel changes I have in the budget is, there is a full, three new FTEs that are going in.
The two, the two that are in the budget?
That were proposed, yeah.
And then the one.
IT, Fire Marshal, and now the Building Inspector is a new addition. I think that's all I had. Is there anything the council has that they want me to make sure that I skipped or didn't think of, or?
Can you, can you just quickly explain the, why the library fund is being transferred to the general fund?
Yeah, you bet.
Or how it was done different, different before?
So in the past.
Nice dramatic pause.
Sorry, I had to go, cause I thought, oh, I can, I was like, I can show you, I have it. So let me pull up last year's tax rate screen. So we'll just look over here, so last year Brigham City had two different tax levies, rates, I don't know what you wanna call them, inside the tax system, there's the general operation rate, and then there's also the library rate. That library rate was a dedicated revenue source for the library. So last year, we anticipated to collect eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars from that levy. And because how it's identified in the tax rate system, it has to be spent at the library. So as, as we've met with staff and looked at other things, and the other issue is, is what we felt was, the library, really, we didn't look at them as, when we looked at capital projects, it was like, hey, you have your own money, don't come ask, this is totally just, don't come ask for other funding, because you have your own, if you want something, save up, go get it when you want it. The, we felt that probably wasn't fair on both sides of it. So that we made the decision, we, we contacted the Tax Commission, looked at state code. So the plan is, we're just gonna roll that rate into the general operation rate. And as soon as we do that, it's no longer a restricted revenue source, so there's no need to have a library fund by itself. They just become part of the general fund, so now when they have projects, and if it's a large project, cause currently, let me back up and say that, so whatever is in the library fund right now, in their savings account, in their fund balance, it's going to come over to the general fund, but it's going to be restricted for library use only. So I'm not allowed to take their savings account and go spend it on streets or parks. Like, that's not allowed, because that money came through that dedicated funding source that had existed previously. So what we're doing in the mayor's upcoming budget in fiscal year twenty-six, is we're just going to eliminate that rate inside the state's tax system. We're just gonna put everything into general operations. The library fund will still continue to be funded at these levels, it's just now as they propose projects that.
Treated like streets.
They're treated like any other department. If they're, if they have a big project that raises to the top, we now can send the city's full resources at it. And as they request different projects or staffing, in all honesty, have been treated like, hey, you have your money, you can go do that, it's fine. Yeah, there was really no, I mean, we did make sure things were, I don't wanna give the impression we weren't looking at it or not doing it, but it's like, well, you got enough money, go do it, yeah, that's fine, that seems appropriate, that, that's not ridiculous, what you're asking for. But we saw a time coming where they were gonna be larger and larger projects, and we wanted to have the ability to fund them, and also to compare them, bring them on the equal playing field with other departments in the city, so. Really, that was the main driver, that's probably a way longer answer than you wanted or needed, but.
So that, that tax rate for the library was already in our tax rate?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so it's not a separate tax?
No, that was the crazy part, so when you receive your tax notice, you'll just see the point zero zero one seven zero six. But on my end, when I get that money from the county, the county treasurer sends it over to us, I have to go and allocate it out based on those percentages, being like, all right, library, you get this much, general operations, you get this much. End of the year, my auditors come in and they would look at that and say, hey, what are you doing, you didn't allocate it, but they never said that, they said, hey, you did a great job, but they could say.
But the tax, the county or the state tax?
Yeah, because that is a restricted.
Are okay. Are okay with that?
Yeah, yep. They've said, they've said, yeah. Is, we can roll that all into one rate.
Okay.
And away we go.
Okay.
So the library board, I'm looking over at council member Jeffries. He used to be on the board. He no longer is. Council member Hip is, but the library board will continue to exist. Um, will function, still useful. I think there actually is probably an appointment coming to the council in the near future of, of new members, but. No, the library is part of the city and this is just putting them inside the general fund.
Nice, thanks. Anything else? Anybody? Any other questions? Clarifications? Anything you spotted that you were like, what? Okay, so we have, so next week, that's what we're gonna do, is we're gonna, I mean, as we've talked, this is kinda where we're headed. So you have a week to go over that, make sure you're still okay with it in your, in your head, and we'll adopt a tentative budget next week. Um, and that's because we won't meet June, we have one meeting, and that's next week, June fifth. Um, and then.
Next week, so, yeah, it's a fun meeting.
And then we'll have.
Lots of public hearings. So you will, so in the RDA, in the MBA, you will actually adopt the final budgets for them, cause they're not impacted by the tax increase. So you can go ahead and approve those final budgets and away we go. The city's budget will be the tentative budget that council member Smith is talking about, so. And that is tentative until we hold the public hearings, and then we make it a final budget in August, September.
After the, after the truth in taxation.
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, then we need to have a motion to adjourn.
Are we, no, we don't, but are we doing a work session next week before the council meeting?
At five, right?
Are we? Do we, do we want to?
We had talked about one.
Yeah. Do you guys have anything else you wanna go over before that? I'm probably o, I'm probably okay to not have to have one.
I don't think we need a work session. I think it's, I think you're right, but, so we go back to six?
So we would just start at six, then, if we don't feel like we need a work session next week. Are you okay with that, Councilman Trump?
On the fifth? Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, so we won't need a work session for next week?
If it changes, it's a little text.
Yeah.
My tax.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It won't, it won't change because we have to notice it, so if we're not gonna do it.
I have to notice it tomorrow.
Yeah, so if we don't, if we don't change it by tomorrow, it's not gonna happen. So, and I, and I think we're okay. If you guys are good, I think we're good to not go ahead and do that, but. Okay, now if we don't need a motion to end the work session, then if there are any other questions, then we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Tom.